I'd like to call for the new organization meeting to order when everyone rise from the top. A pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the good father of which we stand, one nation, a brother God, and the universal covenant of Christianity and justice.
Mr. Kolbink is present. Mr. Mike Dunham here. Mr. Har here. Ms. Franks?
Here.
Ms. Boruski?
Here.
Ms. Kuppa?
Here.
Ms. Swainy?
Here.
Ms. Paul Dunham?
Here.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment?
There's one. There's one.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to secretarial. Adopt agenda is presented.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nomination elections of temporary president. I would like to both to declare the nominations of being accepted for temporary president.
I nominate Mrs. Jan Swainy.
I'll second that. Or you'll need to say. Nomination do not need to be second for any office.
To close the nominations? All those in favor?
Motion made. Second.
I need a motion please to close.
Seven minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Mr. Kolbink?
Are you busy?
All those in favor?
Yes, Ms. Swainy.
Being temporary president?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Congratulations.
Now, I would like to declare the nominations being accepted for president. I nominate Ryan Boruski.
I nominate Jan. And Ms. Shaver. Ms. Swainy.
Do we need a second one?
There'd be a motion to close nominations.
I need a motion to close?
Motion to close. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, now if you wish, you want to do a roll call vote, and each person should state whether they're voting for Mr. Boruski or Ms. Swainy, be aware that abstention doesn't count for anything. So it's a majority of those actually voting.
So we move with Ryan first?
It's, they, you say who you are voting for, since there were two nominees.
So that would be a roll call by Kolbink?
Yeah, alphabetically, Mr. Kolbink, Ms. Shaver, Mr. Mike Dunham, Mrs. Swainy. I mean, Mrs. Swainy, I'm sorry. Mr. Har?
Ms. Swainy.
Ms. Franks?
Mr. Boruski.
Mr. Boruski?
Naturally, I'll vote for myself.
Ms. Kuppa?
Ms. Boruski.
Ms. Swainy?
Mrs. Swainy.
And Mr. Paul Dunham?
Uh, Ms. Swainy.
Hold on a minute. Yes, she is already, Ms. Moser was sworn in prior to tonight's meeting.
Well, I didn't know.
Ms. Moser. Seven and two. Six three.
Three.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, so now may I continue? Uh, we need to nomination election of vice president.
I nominate, uh, Ms. Franks.
I nominate Ryan Boruski.
We need a nominations to be closed.
So moved. Second.
Now we need a roll call?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Same process, roll call vote, say who you're voting for, again, be aware that abstentions don't count for anything. It's a majority of the voting. Mr. Kolbink's voting for Mrs. Franks. Mr. Mike Dunham?
Mrs. Franks.
Mr. Har?
Uh, Mr. Boruski.
Mrs. Franks?
Oh, Mrs. Franks.
Mrs. Moser?
Uh, Mrs. Swainy.
Mr. Boruski?
Uh, Mrs. Franks.
Mrs. Kuppa?
Mrs. Franks.
Ms. Swainy?
Uh, Mr. Swainy.
Mr. Paul Dunham?
Ms. Franks.
There, it might, who's the current treasurer?
Mr. Mike Dunham.
Okay, so there's no need to do treasurer, because that has, he is not taking another office. There is no need to do secretary, because secretary is not taking another office. So you move to another item nine.
Okay, um, the scheduling of meetings. Currently, we need on the third Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM in the D. Firth Elementary School. Work session proceeds Monday before meeting. Um, we need to decide the date, time, and place. Will you let the people the same?
I do think we keep, uh, the schedule of the meetings the same as they are now.
There a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The solicitor. Presently, we pay our solicitor, Andrews and Price, $600 per month and one hundred dollars per hour.
Make a motion we do everything the same since they got it today.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, the FCCTI Joint Operating Committee, we need to appoint a senior term connecting December 2018. Currently, that is Mr. Paul Dunham.
I make a motion that, uh, we renew Mr. Paul Dunham's, uh, tenure on board at the FCCTI.
I'll second if he's willing to do it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seximally signature plate approval.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Utility payment approval.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? PSBA Legislative Council, open to any board member. Uh, the present voting order for roll call votes is that the person making the motion shall be called first, the person seconding the motion shall be called second. Others in alphabetical order, except the president, who is called last. The president will serve from December 3rd, 2018 to the first week in December 2019.
So moved.
Wait a second, we haven't voted for the PSBA.
I'm just gonna go back for that.
Oh, oh, sorry.
I'll finish this, just go ahead.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. No.
What is it, we have to name somebody?
We, we haven't named anybody yet.
Oh, I thought we were voting on.
Yes. Okay, let's go back to the PSBA Legislative Council. We need to open it to any board member. Is there anyone who would like to take that?
Who's the president? Would you like to?
You can.
Yeah. Need a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Franks?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, do we need to do anything about the voting procedure?
I believe that's for intervention, but you wish to change it. I've changed it, and that's why I said no, because I always had the person that nominated as first, the next as second, and then I would not always go alphabetically. I would go different directions. So, a person voting first is not always first, a person voting last is not always last. And that's a procedure I've been doing for the last three or four months.
Are you making a motion to follow it that way then, Mr. Kolbink?
I would like to make a motion for that.
Okay, we go second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, will you come up onto the workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, this will, this will start the, um, December work session. Um, our voting principles, we do not have any voting reports, principals are not in attendance. I have athletic director, Mr. DuMont.
Uh, just a couple things, like if you got schedules for the upcoming season, we kick off this Friday, boys' basketball will be on Penn State Fayette Friday and Saturday. The girls' basketball team will be at Southmoreland both days as well, and the wrestling team will kick off the Chargers use an invitation. Uh, that's pretty much all that I have right now. I get ready to get into the swing of things, and then, uh, I just need a couple minutes in executive session for some coaching.
Uh, Mr. DuMont was going to have the middle school girls here receive the recognition for their accomplishment this year in the 2018 season. However, there was a conflict with band concert at North, so we leave that to January, so all members of the team could be present for recognition. Okay? Maintenance, uh, Mr.?
Wait, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, are we now, there was discussion last month about the drug testing of new, um, coaches, or were the drug, were the coaches that were hired last month drug testing, are we drug testing all moving forward?
I didn't know where you guys stood with that. I wasn't.
So the ones last month were not drug tested?
Not the number one.
They're moving forward, they're going today?
Yes, I believe with our, with our discussion, if they were longer than a year, and it wasn't concurrent, then it, they would be, uh, have to submit to the drug testing before it being current.
Okay, so that's supposed to be effective with everybody hired this month?
That's. I believe so, yes. I, I, I don't know who they are, but remember, they, if it's an offer of employing them, then after you employ them, they have to do it.
Yeah, I didn't know that reply was submitted about last month.
Well, they could get hired unless they have property in their documentation with their, with their clearances, and that will be part of their clearances. Mike, where Chris? Uh, well, their clearances, but they're, if they're, once they're, once they're hired, they have to, you know, consent to the drug testing. That's part of the process. Correct. Unless it's somebody who worked already for the district coaching, and they were hired for another sport, and often they have a drug test every season or every time if there's a continuation of their employment. But if there was a break in their employment, they didn't coach for us for a year, went somewhere else and came back, then they would be considered a new hire or re-hire with the break in their service, they would have to drug test again. That was the way I understood, we completely learned the discussion last month.
Who specifically is wanted to be monitoring that to make sure if these new hires are already drug tested?
Uh, I, if it's, if it's coaching with I'm like director, Mr. DuMont and I, and Captain Hertzberger can just make sure that someone who requires that they submit to the drug test will be able to do it.
What about others, what about others, like say, teachers or students?
Say, with anybody that's hired for our campus full district, an employee of ours, um, that would be a pre-appointed condition, that they have to be drug tested, whether it be a substitute teacher, a full-time teacher, what happened. Okay? Any other questions for Mr. DuMont?
We can probably add that to the packet that we pass out to new hires for, uh, for coaches that's in there.
You have this way, make the central.
Pardon me, there is central.
Hey, um, financial, Mrs. Sheets?
Just a couple things that are on the agenda. Uh, the passport mailing under financial C, that is for the cost of processing letters and applications to notify property owners of the March 1st deadline to apply for potential property tax relief. Uh, under financial C, we need to appoint a representative and an alternate to attend the monthly Southwest Regional Tax Bureau Executive Committee meeting and the quarterly Fayette County Tax Collection Committee meeting. Currently, I am the representative, and Mr. Boruski is my alternate. The meetings are held at the South Gated Township University Building on the third Wednesday of the month at 11:00 AM. That changed, um, since it first started, so it's, it's actually falling on the day of our board meetings now. So, a lot of times, I have every intention of getting there, but something happens getting ready for the meeting, and I don't make it. So if somebody else would want to be the representative, I would be happy to be the alternate. If you're interested in that.
And he said he's still at 11:00?
They're at 11:00 in the morning on the third Wednesday of the month, so either they, they are voting.
Mr. Boruski?
Since, since you're the alternate, would you like to move up to? Sure.
Switch places. And the only other item, um, I just sent, I passed out an updated capital projects schedule to include, um, the item under capital projects under financial F to reflect purchase of security cameras. And that's all I have, unless anybody has that question.
Can we just have a question, uh, in general about, uh, the various funds, uh, for example, as the, the two middle schools and the high schools, the student activity funds, are those audited by our auditor?
Yes.
Okay. On an annual basis. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Rohl, food service?
I'll stand up some way and back. Uh, now, I have a report I did include with your packet, was an article that was written in the newsletter for the Pittsburgh Food Bank. Uh, it's a publication that goes out to the western part of the state, so I was very proud of that. I recognize the breakfast programs we started, they are elementary, middle schools, and our high schools. Um, so it, we'll get his recognition, a good recognition is a fact. Uh, we keep plugging away and getting ready for the next month, so that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Rohl? Thanks Troy. Technology, Mr. Ollie.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, the only thing I have to mention is Denise already has is, you know, on the agenda to pay the bill for the security cameras. They have, uh, been ordered and were delivered today, so we'll be starting to work on the install on those.
Do we want to wait till they're installed, so we make sure that they're working properly before we pay for them?
I don't think we've done that in the past. Uh, we probably certainly could, um, but typically electronics are pretty good with, as far as dead on arrival. Um, but I mean, that would, we could certainly do that. It's up to Denise.
Could we just add that here, you know, pending with their, their service or something to the, to the motion?
I just know in the past, we, we've purchased security cameras, and then after an event has taken place, we found out for various reasons, uh, there was nothing on the camera because the camera wasn't working. I just want to make sure that since these are new cameras, that they're working the way they're supposed to be before we pay for them.
I need to man make a roll myself.
Chris, you can do it. Yes. Um, let me jump back up, my mistake. Maintenance, Mr. Cheslow?
Good evening, board. Hey, uh, good news is our generator's coming back from North tomorrow, so we'll get it installed. Uh, lead testing has been conducted at all schools except the high school. We've got that into the testing lab, and should be getting reports, so we should pile that. Uh, we're starting on the, here, have walkthroughs. Uh, yesterday we actually started that, and today, we've got the high school, D. Firth, Central Office, Smithville, and A.L. Wilson done. We're gonna start next week with the rest of the schools. And, uh, tomorrow, we're gonna do the final walkthrough on the roofing projects and do the final, uh, punch list on that. Any questions of me, on the board?
Yeah, hey Bill, what that generator run us?
We don't have it until they get it completely installed yet, because they got to be craned and everything and stuff. I did talk them down on the, uh, rental fee. Uh, they wanted to charge us $3,000 a month, and I said, listen guys, it ain't running, it's just sitting there idle. So they did knock it in half for us on the rental fee.
Any other questions for Mr. Cheslow? Okay, um, special whip, Mrs. Brickvich?
We're going to be having a meeting with our representative on indicator 13, coming up there soon, over the next Friday, and then we'll have an idea where we stand, we expect that review. We're just busy in meetings right now, a lot of meetings taking place, trying to get a lot of the IP's worked out, meetings held before the holidays. Mrs. Dunham might have some things to add.
And Mrs. Dunn?
Uh, just a reminder that, um, we need to, uh, consider adding a temporary learning support position at Flava, just to get through the remainder of the school year due to the ladies, um, getting close to their table of the maximums, the learning support teachers, um, from now until, again, the end of the school year. I don't anticipate that being a full-time need at this time, moving forward, but for now, temporary between now and the end of this year.
Have there been any, um, new students brought into South since our last meeting?
Um, South, I'm north South, because Mrs. Brickvich is, um, I don't watch those case lines as closely as I do north, but, uh, she might be able to see that one.
I believe there are these students that may have entered the building since our last meeting, but off the top of my head, I can't recall if, um, they were special education. Like, I don't think they were, but, um, if they are, but we haven't had a chance to hold the meeting, that would still be, you know, uh, under review, because we always end up doing, if they come and say, we're always doing our, um, our review before we offer them an IP with our history.
Could you possibly have those numbers in January?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Brickvich or Mrs. Dunn? Um, this is Bezak, elementary, federal, and curriculum?
Uh, I'd just like to report to the board that since our last meeting, the district of Y, once I asked a student about the 30, um, I did submit it. Um, I was alarmed when it bounced back, wanting to admit to you, there were some corrections that needed made. Um, those corrections were made, um, right before Thanksgiving, and, um, I'm pleased to say that we did get an notification on Monday, um, the following Thanksgiving, that it was successfully through, and we're good to go as far as the plan we have in plan. We are continuing to still review, um, our transition activities with the, um, pre-kindergarten service providers, and still looking at numbers. And at this point, it was reported to me that we have a solid 58 already, um, but we can't just pay coming in kindergarten this year, so, and it's barrier, obviously, so they do know that they have 58 already coming, so, that's it.
Any questions for Mrs. Bezak? The secondary and, uh, high school principal, curriculum, Mr. Hudsonson?
Uh, we have that, uh, PCCD grant that's coming, that'll be in January, they're hoping to release the money in January or February. Uh, I will attend a conference tomorrow, uh, that Safe to Say, which is Pennsylvania's initiative for every district to have four people, uh, in charge of hotline, uh, for people to remain anonymous, uh, to call in for safety reasons. And last, the high school was, uh, one of 280 school districts to be targeted for, uh, improvement in learning support, uh, for their attendance, math, English, and their progress. Uh, myself and Mr. Peggy attended a meeting last week, I think 300 schools out of 500 were, uh, didn't make the cut, uh, so that's Pennsylvania's way of their new ESAPLAN, uh, who's student, uh, success, succeed. We'll see how that goes, uh, so we have to make improvements for four years at the high school, the learning support, uh, attendance, math, English, and, uh, they need to show growth.
Any questions for Mr. Hudsonson? Transportation, Mr. Parker?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I did run through the numbers for the winter sports season, and our district ban should save us north of $5,800 this year, uh, so keep that in mind for the spring, that, uh, they are continuing to save some massive amounts of money. Uh, secondly, after our meeting last month, we had three serious bus accidents. Um, luckily, there was only one student who was taken away by ambulance, but thank goodness they were on a bus, it could have been much, much worse. I think, Mr. Peggy, you were gonna speak on this?
Uh, yes. I would like to take this opportunity this time to, uh, recognize and, and thank, um, the fire department, the EMS, EMTs, um, on seeing the accident. You know, we had 39 students on a bus. Uh, when I showed up, with this, you know, children were obviously upset from being involved in the accident. Um, administrators and those that assisted throughout the ordeal, um, I'd like to personally thank Mrs. Bezak, Mrs. Dunham, Mrs. Baker, Mrs. Shiroki, Kim Riley, Stacy Peetorn, Vic, named Andrew Vera, Sherry Arndt, Bill Parner, Terry Simon, Mark Dunham, who was, uh, not a teacher in that area, but he was one of the, uh, EMTs that showed up voluntarily, um, and Kathy Hertzberger, you know, it was, uh, we stayed involved into the evening, making sure everything, and parents were contacted, and everybody went above and beyond, um, you know, call of duty in a, in a, in a crisis situation. So I can't thank everyone enough for the bus cost to that bus accident. Um, and thank goodness, as Mr. Parner said, um, that it was, that there weren't any serious injuries. So the situation was bad, could have been a lot worse, and, you know, once again, thank you to everybody that jumped into help in that crisis situation. Um, also like to thank the bus driver, the actions she took, you know, it was 100% unavoidable on her part, but she did everything she could to minimize the impact of the collision, to get off the berm of the road, to avoid getting hit from the oncoming car that lost control of this kind of hyperplane, um, on 857 there. So her actions during that accident, as well as her attention, immediate attention to call for help and to get out of the bus, or, or throw out the bus, to check on every student to make sure that they were on injury. So, um, watching the video, um, I believe STA is gonna be using that bus driver's reactions to that circumstance as a training for other bus drivers throughout the company. So, thanks again to the bus drivers for all the help.
Any questions for Mr. Parner?
Mr. Parner, would I like to have the fuel cost from last year and this year compared on the buses for next meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
Also, Mr. Parner, I know that beginning of the school year, there was problems, uh, getting all the new buses online. Uh, for our next meeting, can you give us, uh, an update on the age of the buses that are presently in service?
Sure, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Uh, I can't at this point, all the new buses have arrived, or are we still waiting for the state police to come and inspect some of them?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, security, school safety, chief elector?
I have nothing at this time. I, you know, do, exactly.
Okay. Um, other administrator, um, I believe, uh, Mr. Boruski, you had a brief, demonstration at Carpoint?
Thank you all for coming. It's nice to see this room full of people. So I wanted to talk to you briefly about the Pennsylvania Farm Show, and how it actually provides students with, you know, hands-on experience in agriculture. provides students with, you know, hands-on experience in agriculture, and, you know, can provide educational experiences for them. You know, it's the largest indoor agricultural event in the nation, and it provides over ten thousand competitive exhibits and over six thousand animals. You know, agriculture can provide tremendous career opportunities for our students, because it's Pennsylvania's second-largest industry. Now, the video from last year's Farm Show. You have to click twice for it. That would have been a lot more epic if we would have had a better sound. So the language in the school code requires us to adopt policies permitting students to attend this Farm Show on an educational leave. And currently, we don't have any policies in place that would permit them to go, you know, regardless of how many days they missed, or however, we go about that. You know, many of our faculty and students already attend the show regularly to showcase their livestock and other commodities. And the school board may also authorize attendance at the Farm Show for, you know, students that aren't exhibiting, that aren't exhibiting for educational value. So, students and faculty should be permitted to attend the PA Farm Show. Students will be exposed to many career opportunities and the latest agricultural advances. The 2019 Farm Show will be participating in ADD Explorer, which will provide thirty stations demonstrating real-life applications of classroom concepts. ADD one oh one will be demonstrating cutting-edge technology such as drones and promoting career opportunities around the Commonwealth. So, the Farm Show is coming up on the fifth of January, so I think we should move to make sure all our students and faculty, the need to attend, have the means to attend. And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Ryan, I think our kids are taxable, we've already adopted that policy for our school district.
Well, I'm talking-
They attend that policy.
I'm talking about our regular students that don't attend that school.
If it isn't a concept for students to apply for an educational pass for certain trips, would this not fall under that?
Yeah, we've, for years, we've had students that had gone to the Farm Show, that they can attend, and they would be excused absences for that, and we could look at, if it's considered a field trip, so it wouldn't be marked as an absence, it would be considered a field trip, that's something they would look at doing. But we have had students that have gone in the past, that it was more or less approved leave, we have students that leave for approved family travel and things of that nature. And if Mr. Beruski was required to do with absences, students that have less than ten absences can get those, that approval, they would be excused absences to attend events like that, or family travel, as long as their number of absences, if you see ten absences in the school year.
I'm thinking our policy, we allow farm days for educational purposes.
Ryan, do you know how many students in our district, like, have shown here, here annuals with various projects?
It varies year to year, you know.
Just, you know, I don't-
I would say around, you know, twenty or twenty-five.
There are even more families that want to go to the National Show, and there is an educational benefit to that as well.
This, this policy, you know, of the school code actually requires us to make provisions for any student who wants to attend for educational purposes.
I like the idea that that would fall under a field trip exception rather than being considered an absence.
Not to change the subject, we discussed this before, but I think that vote viewing should be behind us, so you can see, all we have to do is turn our chairs around. Also, we can record it, so it's all in there for everything, so the next time we have a demonstration, it should be behind us, now I think we made that remark before. Those individuals could see exactly what we saw, and the same with the others can't see that.
So, I would like to see us, you know, give our administration a directive to, you know, amend our current policy tonight, so that the students may attend, want to, on an educational leave.
So when we get to the regular meeting, then, when it's adopted, the agenda is presented, we can get a motion to let the agenda make that motion?
Okay.
We already, I'm confused. Mr. Peggy already said that we permit that, right?
But we could make a motion to have it counted, don't you have those absences?
We could look into it, I believe we can. I don't think that would necessarily be the policy, or policy change, but I can look into it and see what we can and can't do for those types of trips, of educational trips, if they can be marked as field trips. I believe they can, as long as something's brought back and turned in, you know, to show that there was education about it.
I think, Mr. Beruski, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have a meeting until after the next Farm Show. So I think he wanted to make sure that if there were students who wanted to attend it, as well as the ones who are presenters, will be able to do so without accounting it as an absence.
Correct. If we don't do something tonight, we'll miss this Farm Show, and we'd have to have it for next year.
So I think the board could direct administration and the building principals in particular that, that if you're gonna, at least your current policy, you're gonna interpret it that way, if it needs clarified so be it, to allow students to attend this year's Farm Show.
Would we want a limit on the number of days?
Well, because I know with our field trips, we have just like a two or three day, I don't have the policy, of course, in front of me, but we spend time going back, so they won't be out of school that long. And I do know this is educational, but I, I just think we need specifics. They can say they're at the Farm Show, and they're not at the Farm Show, I mean, really?
Well, we gotta be careful, if it's gonna be marked as an absence, whether it's excused or not, the way ESSA is now working, that every absence counts against our district, whether it's an excused absence or not. So, although the way we take attendance now, for example, I believe, off the top of my head, district-wide, our attendance is around ninety-one percent, that's taking into effect excused absences versus unexcused. The new change with how they are rating your school, your district on attendance, is that every absence, whether excused or not, counts as an absence against your school.
And I believe Mr. Hudsonson just said, we can use-
Yeah, so we need to be very careful on making a policy that's gonna allow students to be absent even though they're counted as excused. Those excused absences still count against us.
Is that how the benefit is accounted as a field trip rather than an absence?
That's what I wanna look into, you know, I can't guarantee you that that would be a field trip versus an absence, because I don't wanna do something that is gonna get us, if that's not permissible, I don't wanna, you know, do that, and us get slapped on the wristboard.
I do think too that it should be a law, law, the law, if you have a seat at the Farm Show, it's patient, we're not gonna take orders that they're there for weeks.
Plus, I mean, I know, I know, Ryan, but this is quite short notice, I mean, I wish we would have talked about it last night, and then Mr. Peggy would have had more time. Because I, I'm certainly not against it.
Yeah, I thought, I sent an email from the Pennsylvania School Board Association, since the Farm Show was coming up.
We can make a motion contingent on, we can do it, after Mr. Peggy checks it out, we'll do that.
Sure.
Again, I think the board is not having, I think, I think you could have it both not counted as an absence, because it's considered to be an educational experience, in which case the district is in a sense, like, or, or, part of the statute apparently states that if a child is an exhibitor, student, excuse me, is an exhibitor, we're required to let them attend.
You wouldn't be documenting that page in the paper there?
If there's an exhibit, you have to-
I think you have to take it as a field trip, so you just gotta make a decision. All right, in the future, if a teacher's wanting, to me, that'd be a typical field request, and a teacher would take first graders, third grader, eighth graders, whatever, to show, which would be the same as all other field trips. All right, under other business as well, we have Ford Business Machines copier service present, we discussed last month, their proposal, so I believe I saw Mr. Mace?
Yes.
I think the motion we go with-
I don't know if we do it general?
Just to be sure, the board doesn't want to seek any other proposals, or-
How about, where is everybody else?
I don't know, can they give us more information, the Farm information?
Colonel, I believe last, last month, we were going to do a survey of our, the machines in the district, and we'd come back and let us know, is that prepared?
Yes, yes, we already did the walkthrough, we did it the next day with Mr. Bullen, and we went around, and what we were able to do, once we saw the models that were in place, we were actually able to give you faster models at the same price. Secretaries will all have fax machines built into their copiers, which will cut down on the price of having traditional toners on. The teachers will all have LCCs, which are large-capacity pissettes, so they will be able to put a case and a half of paper in those machines, they'll go eighty, eighty copies a minute. Secretaries will have forty-six copies a minute, so, there'll be one colored machine at the administration, and one small machine. So, instead of having, I believe it was seven different models that Xerox had around your work, school district, we'll have one color, one small, one administration, and then all the rest will be split in two, you'll only have two other models, so there'll be four models altogether, which will streamline. So, if AL runs out of toner, they can call up North and say, hey, can you send over a toner by accident, you know, if something would happen like that. So, everything's streamlined now, so, not that you should ever have to do that, I'm just saying, everything's streamlined, so. And also, if a teacher goes from this building over here at North to working in South, they don't know how to run everything, everything will be the same, so. And it's all, and they're all, it's all brand-new equipment. When we did the evaluation on the others, we checked DLI, which is bio laboratory, which is our standard, it's like UL, it's our industry standard, and the machines coming from Xerox were just a little bit older. These will be all brand-new.
Did you contact Xerox about the buyout? Could you explain to the board how the buyout works?
Okay, so the customer has to contact, you'll contact Xerox, and they'll give you a buyout, and they'll tell you what the amount is, and they'll write a check for that.
And you write that to the district?
Yeah, and then you'll send out it.
And could you tell us what's not included in our lease price, are all the supplies included?
Everything is stapled.
Except staples?
Yeah, and paper. Toner's included, developer drones, labor, all parts.
Shipping, did you mention shipping?
Shipping, yeah, shipping for toner will be a little bit extra, but you order, so at one school, you'll order four toners for this model, four toners for that, and shipping will be, you'd say, eight dollars, so, for that.
Will you train somebody at each school so they know how to put the staples in and put the toner?
Turn to a, yes.
And also, just, the machines have the capacity, like, for a teacher, to put something on hold and send it to the copier?
Yes.
Yep, and that during the install process, we'll go through training and have that set up with different schools, three mountain times for the use, to go into a new product, but I mean, that's repeated on the work, and usually, I'm setting all that up.
Mr. Mace, with the transition, the timing, my main concern is that there won't be an interruption to the services at the schools.
Yes, sir.
How will that be handled with your guys and Mr. Bullen and his crew?
So with our implementation plan, if you give approval tonight, we can order the machines tomorrow, they'll be here by Christmas break, we'll install them, we're hoping to, Christmas will be Tuesday, we're hoping to be able to install them Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, around to all the schools. That way, when Christmas break comes back, we'll be available to train teachers, and the secretaries will be there during Christmas break too, or not?
They're probably taking vacation.
Okay, so the ones that are there will train then, and the ones that aren't, we'll start training whenever Christmas vacation's over.
Mr. Mace, do you have an idea or a ballpark of what this buyout is, and do you have a cap on this buyout?
Yeah, the cap, the cap was set in July, it's in the proposals that I've given you, the, I can't get one, but the cap, the cap's a couple months old, so it, we're under it, we're under the cap.
We know if Xerox does have, Xerox does permit a buyout, is that correct?
Yeah, everyone does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Mr. Price, if, if the board so chooses, could we approve the contract with Ford pending the condition of the buyout with Xerox?
Yeah, all, I mean, we don't wanna-
I assume there's gonna be a contract document that's going to stay all that.
Well, I didn't want to assume that.
Well, did I? More of our government.
Yeah, I like that line, too, as current, I think-
I don't want us to, to make a motion to approve Ford Business, and I have no problem with their presentation.
with their presentation, but my concern is what we are legally, uh, required in our contract with Xerox.
Well, and should, do we not have a statement with Xerox that definitely what the buyout is? And, and, and so, do, do, I mean, do we have a current written contract with Xerox?
I'll probably look like a hundred and ninety thousand.
Yeah, can we not request, so we don't have to, for a mile, that's what we would have.
So, at the end of August, your buyout under the right to know was a hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-three cents. And that's what we set at that time. So, since then, we've had September, October, through November, so it'll be less than that.
It'll be less than that.
Yeah.
Did you talk to Xerox at all?
No. You're, you're the cost, you're the customers at Xerox, you don't care, we have no, but it's, it'll be a matter of being unsatisfied with the price and the...
Cause you said right to know, so I'm assuming you must've seen Xerox's contract through a right to know request, and so you're pretty confident that that number's pretty close?
Correct.
And that number, if you can reach out to Xerox, they will provide that to you.
I would just like written documentation from Xerox. So, so, and forgive us, I'm not referring to the actual document. Was that a figure that you had to calculate yourself, or was it clear cut in the contract?
Well, it was in your notes from your, from your meeting, so, so, um, I, I feel confident that you guys got it right.
It's, it's nice to have something, you know, we get something ready from Xerox and they can't change their mind or, or there's no chance, they're, they're bound to that once they get to the hiring, so to speak.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Well, we amended and we put, as Mr. Dunn said, pending what the buyout is for Xerox. Will that be all right with you?
Well, it's, it's the whole package. I mean, the, these gentlemen aren't gonna want to do it if the buyout ends up being higher. That's, but they seem pretty confident, but when you say based on our notes, I, I don't know what, what you're referring to.
Where'd you come up with that, Tom? Well, well, with Xerox.
When they did their presentation, they came to us earlier.
Right, exactly.
Oh, you're basing it on when they came and offered to extend the contract.
Yeah.
And these guys are gonna pay our fine shot and still save us so much money.
How soon do you need to make your order to be able to install them over Christmas break?
Now?
Now.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Do you, because you're in the industry, do you have any idea how long it would take? If we requested tomorrow from Xerox their payoff, how long it would take them to respond?
Their customer service is, is good as they tout.
Yeah.
It should be done tomorrow.
Okay.
So, and usually, when we've done other deals, they usually do it. They're, you know, it's within hours, not days, so.
I said we're good with this. Pending lots, it doesn't exceed a hundred.
Yeah.
Some dollars.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If, if the board wants to butt on this tonight, we do have to amend the regular meeting agenda. It was on your agenda for items for discussion. Uh, well, we, we, I don't believe it's on the regular agenda. It's amended. So, we would have to amend that before the, uh, before the meeting.
You're, you're, hold on one second. You're, are we tied to your proposal you gave last meeting? Does that change? Yeah, your, your proposal you gave last meeting, um, has that changed at all? If we tie it to that, so we have what we're voting on?
The price isn't non-changed, um, except the MPS went up twenty dollars.
What is MPS?
So, your managed print services.
Okay. Now, one way, okay, are you going to do the printers immediately or starting July 1st with Xerox?
That's related to you. That's related to...
Immediately, sorry.
Well, we would like to, but if that's, if that's...
Cause that's a separate contract rate for Xerox, right? Our printers?
Yeah. And we had discussed, we had discussed that, that if that was a sticking problem for the board, we could put that off, but...
Yeah, I don't know if there's a difference in cancellation of payoff arrangement regarding the printing contract, what do you call it? Print management service.
Is that per, per unit, per month, per unit to month, twenty dollars?
No, no.
How many units?
No, you're looking at, um, the MPS, you guys have...
I think we're sticking here. Yeah, from the previous proposal, it says additional twenty dollars in the MPS portion monthly.
Oh, that one time.
And that was from the original printers. We found a couple of them throughout the fleet, and I made that final adjustment on the printer. Um, and yet, we don't know the termination on the printers, if it is, um, on a monthly or how that does, um, end on that contract, but, yeah, we can work with you and start that, um, as needed, um, throughout our, uh, we do it.
Okay, so everything is included, including delivery of the equipment and training for the price that's in your proposal. The one thing, the one thing is that we have to pay for future toner purposes. You have to pay for the shipping to the toner, but the toner is included.
Right.
And the buyout is capped at one hundred ninety-two thousand, eight ninety-six, present month?
Yes.
And the MRS services will be twenty dollars a month more than what you had originally set.
Correct, correct. We have coffee, uh, and update solutions.
And that's still subject to whether we can, if we can't get out of the Xerox, um, manage, what do we call it, managing grading services until June thirtieth? June July? July thirty-first. We can adjust that accordingly then?
Absolutely.
So, you would pick up then August first if we can't get out of it?
Absolutely. The only issue is being able to do it in the future.
Okay, we'll come up with something for twenty dollars. What's the date of that last one proposal? I know it's got a number on it.
Well, originally, we started this October first. We were anticipating...
But it was, it was, it was our November thirteenth.
It wasn't November.
November thirteenth.
Okay.
I'll, I'll read something and see if everybody agrees, but we have the data on our voting agenda.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Price, that would be under...
Wherever you want to stick it, please. We're gonna do that when you amend the agenda. I don't think it matters, we'll materially put it on the board.
The last thing I have under administrative is the, um, buyer for the former A.L. Wilson elementary in Fairchance was, is asking for an extension on the closing date until January eleventh, twenty nineteen. Uh, the Powell Auction Agency had contacted me today, and I spoke to them yesterday as well asked today, and that is the date they were asking us to extend the closing date to, I believe the closing date was scheduled for next week, if I'm not mistaken.
Um, the closing had to occur by December eighth on the building, so they're asking to extend, today they asked to extend until January...
January eleventh is the date that she had set.
No, yeah, keep in mind, they do have hand money sitting with Joe R. Powell, the auctioneer slash broker, in the amount of six thousand eight seven five, so they realize that's at risk for them. And the vacant lot is going to close tomorrow. That'll be taken care of tomorrow, and they are on time.
I mean, I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem. Do we know the reasons for the delay?
I, I just heard this when I came in. Do you, Mr. Page, do you know what the delay was?
No, I do not. They didn't let me know what the delay was, they just asked for the extension. Uh, in fact, she first told me the, early in, uh, the first of the year, she had texted me right as the meeting was starting, the specific date she didn't write it on.
I was gonna say, don't we need to be concerned about our cash flow, you know, getting this money in as fast as possible?
If we, yeah, I would be, plus we're in a business, we have assurances that they're, like, if, if they're in the process of finding, and they, and they've been approached, it's just a matter of getting tunneling towards something bad, I would be more comfortable, but I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for some kind of confirmation that if they're finding the bear, it's just...
Would you like to try to get her on the phone? I'd like it. Call.
Usually they grow you, they, they, they...
I understand, I understand. The board has had a question why, um, we're being asked to extend to... The tax, we get to call back, so the board is, uh, appreciating. Okay, we should make a shift back to that.
I understand that nothing you're voting on requires executive session, but I believe you wanted an executive session following our voting meeting for collective bargaining and personnel. Is there anything else?
So, if this, if this one doesn't call back within two minutes, I'm certain the bond is extended until January, I don't believe it'll come. I mean, if our meetings continue, it's probably January, so going on all the financial issues, we'll have...
You, you do have on the agenda approving conveyance of the deeds, excuse me, delivery of the deeds for both of the properties, one of which is going to be in place, like I said, tomorrow, and the other, right now, will be on before January eleventh.
Yeah, I mean, do we have, are people doing fine with that?
I don't have a problem with it.
It's another month of whatever. They just get their funding and they set up, and that's a done deal at one time, but they, obviously, the finances aren't in a rut right now for the closing to happen, but with another month of potentially bad weather and, and damage, I don't think it's, um, I would request that if we're gonna approve it, that there needs to be some documentation in the next ten days that there's, that they have the financing, where the issue's a matter of paperwork.
I personally don't believe the people who bought it that there's a problem with finances. Uh, I don't.
Well, we're not, we're not... I, you know, I, I, I could venture a reason, that maybe they want to be into calendar year, that's about the right team. I, I don't know, but I, it wouldn't surprise me, because we're so close, that maybe for tax reasons, we feel it's better for them to acquire in January as opposed to December. But, I, I mean, if nobody, as if, if enough people don't have concern about extending it to that date regardless of what the reason is, but yes, I think, um, this group is suggesting a recommendation to try to find out what is the reason. Cause there was no contingency for finance in this deal. It's a cash deal.
I have the buyer's phone number, which will be called the buyer's, if I can... I, I don't think I have the correct number. I'll wait and see if she'll call me back. Okay, um, executive session will do after the regular meeting.
I was gonna suggest, we have someone else here who wants to present. I was wondering if we could skip to that.
Yeah, I, I was gonna go to that, if that's, that's gonna be the start of the regular meeting. Okay? We're gonna use, um...
Mr. Price, we don't need to go through the whole call of order.
Um, if you're gonna actually start your, your actual voting meeting, all you have to do is to roll call. You don't need any further...
Um, and one more question, too. Looking at the, on, on financial due, it, it doesn't give any dates.
That, that's correct, because we don't know for sure the actual closing date.
So then...
Whenever this was done, it turns out that we are gonna close on the vacant lots mark, the vacant lot.
So then, a big confirmation will have to be there?
Frankly, this is only being done because the title company for the vacant lot requested that we specifically authorize, um, delivery of deed. Because really, the agreement requires us to do, the title companies, I understand, requesting it. So, I would say, let's do it for both of the cases, and we'll be in place. So, we've got the program we have to do. If we close before our next meeting, we're covered. With January eleventh, we'll be before our next meeting.
Yeah, so then it will, it would be okay, but what I'm asking is, would that need a, Mr. Page finds out after this meeting, will January eleventh still be all right if it's not a financial, if it's just paid without a...
Well, we're, right now, we're, it's already known, the buyer is asking for extension to January eleventh. If they miss that, they're gonna have to bring it back to you. You're likely making risk for it because you have their hand on it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, we're going to move into our regular meeting. Uh, Mr. Paul Knight, would you, please, do your call?
Mr. Paul Dunham?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
Ms. Grupa?
Here.
Mr. Bruski?
Here.
Ms. Mosher?
Here.
Ms. Franks?
Here.
Mr. Harne?
Here.
Ms. Mark Dunham?
Here.
Mr. Pollock?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, public forum? Is there Joseph Goblebatch, Mason Tapiet?
Hello, my name is Joseph Dolvabach. I'm from Mason, Pennsylvania. And today I have a proposal for student delegates to the school board. So, obviously, you guys are important to the school district as a whole. According to the former directive mission to Princeton University, James Wickenden, the best school boards are constructive agents for change. And he also lists responsibilities of the school board. He lists 10 major ones. Two that I picked out specifically are to determine the school's mission and purpose, and to determine, monitor, and strengthen the school's programs and services. And with, uh, student delegates, these functions will be improved. So, the importance of having a voice. The student body of Albert Gallatin is the focus of the district. Your operation depends on student enrollment. And the school board makes major decisions impacting the lives of students. And due to this, each student body needs to be more aware of these decisions. Uh, so allowing for student delegates to be part of the school board allows for voices on opinions or for decisions that affect us. Other districts in the area, such as Laurel Highlands, already have this. And I've done a lot of research. It's very popular in other states. Maryland has a lot. I spoke with, uh, the principal of the high school, Mr. Reams, to get approval for this presentation and everything. He said his daughter's school actually has this system also. So, the way, uh, student delegates will be elected, they will fall into the hierarchy of student council, which is seen, overseen by Mrs. Wolf and Mrs. Chigarelli. Uh, there will be delegates elected by the upcoming senior class, so it would be technically the current junior class. And that would be at the end of the year so that they're able to fulfill the three, uh, meetings during the summer. And also, candidates will run for office and they will be elected by the student, uh, the senior class. And in the event of a tie, there'll be a runoff election and the, there'll be a runoff election between the two candidates. And whoever wins that will be the other candidate placed inside. So, student delegates will give a voice to an unrepresented student body. High school students are many times considered the representation of the district. When we go out to various field trips and events and everything, we have our Colonials gear on, a lot of people see us. And we, whether good or bad, we are represented, uh, we're representing Albert Gallatin as a district. So, it is imperative that we are formed on matters that happen within the district. Student delegates will work as a liaison between the student body and the school board, allowing the students to have more of a voice. So, delegates will not have a vote on any official matters. Legally, I don't think that's allowed, but just wanted to put that in there. Uh, rather, they would communicate student voice to public meetings. And also, delegates will come at no cost to the district. Uh, the students will be rep, uh, responsible themselves for providing transportation to the meetings and whatever else needs done. That's all their responsibilities. And it's also the delegates' responsibility to communicate with other students within the school on issues, and also to not only, only the bad, the good. If a student accomplishes something in the high school and they want to be presented here, student delegate can introduce them. So, mainly, this is due to the fact that I saw earlier in this year, I attended the September meeting when there was the conflict with the homecoming parade. And I knew there was a lot of, not, I don't wanna say anger in the school, but resistance towards not having a homecoming parade. And I saw posted everywhere that, oh, we want to have this parade, and only one person came to speak. So, I feel that students are a lot more approachable than necessarily coming up here and speaking in front of everybody in the public. So, they could come to us with that issue or that confrontation. And they can say, hey, we'd like you to say something about this during the next meeting. So, overall, student delegates are meant to enchant your operation as a school board by having, uh, our ma, our opinion on some matters. And allowing these positions to be created, you're demonstrating to the students that their voice is considered. So, thank you, guys. If you have any questions, I'd be more than...
I think it's a great idea, Joseph. I think it's a great idea. You did a great presentation.
I really like the idea of students being active in their community. Uh, have, since Laurel Highlands has this, um, do you have any idea of any examples of impacts that the students have in, in their schools?
Uh, I have actually not had any conversations with anybody from Laurel Highlands. I have done a majority of my research online. And I came across, I was looking through school boards in the area to see who else might have something like this. And Laurel Highlands happened to be one to come across. So, I have, I don't have any specific examples for you from a school in this area. But it just helps a lot between communication. It makes you guys a lot easier because, obviously, you're not in school anymore. So, you're left in the dark a lot of times on decisions that you might not be fully educated on. I'm not saying that against you. I'm just saying that it's not something that you're most times aware of. I mean, I'm not, obviously, with tax and everything, we can't have full decisions. But, uh, I just think that it's a lot better for students to, for us, and especially representatives from the school, to be able to sit up there and kind of give you insight about what's going on.
I, I think it's wonderful when they prepare it to be a role.
Now, will you get a consensus when you come to us? Will you have a consensus of the other students?
Oh, that is the main idea. Uh, if a lot of students come to or address a particular problem and they come to us and they say, hey, multiple students are coming and saying, hey, we have a problem with this, or we'd like to improve this, or I have a suggestion about this. This is the goal, to kind of get this communicated better to you.
And how are you going to do this?
Um, so, I actually had this idea. I think it needs tweaked a little bit, but I also would, I...
You've done a good job so far. I'm sure you'll tweak it.
Yeah. Um, the idea that I had was placing a suggestion box within the school so that students are able to go and put these suggestions in. We'd obviously read them prior and then maybe bring these up with the school board or concerns. So that way, students can do it either, they can write their name right on a piece of paper, say, hi, I'm Joseph Dolvabach, I want to address this problem. Or they can do it anonymously. If they say, oh, I'm having this problem. But they're not, they don't want to come out and say, hey, it's me, it's, I want to talk about this. So, they have the opportunity to do that anonymously and independently. So, it's a little bit more of a voice for everybody. And I, I think it needs to be adjusted a little bit because I can see some problems coming with this box. So, uh...
Do we, do we need to wait, do we need to wait though until, is there a way? Because we still have, what, half the school year left? Is there a way that we can do an election of, to get the current seniors to text them?
Uh, I'm a current senior, so I, I'm kind of hoping that there would be a possibility, yes.
I was pointing to your presentation, it really wouldn't start until the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that is, that's, that's gonna be six months, so...
Yeah. Uh, well...
Because it would, I would really like it to be able to start in January.
Yeah, I would do more than, yeah, I would love for it to start. I was just, my election basis was more on the continuing right now because first, I'd like to get it implemented. And then after that, yeah, I'd love to have a...
I like, I like the way you would have, have them chosen through the student council.
Yeah. So, I think that, I think that we would have a possibility to get it done before winter break even. Have candidates, whoever want to, whoever wants to run. Put it in the ballot and then, uh, have a vote for the senior count. Ah, yeah, I definitely think we would be able to get it done before.
Or you could just let Mr. Pegg know what the outcome was and then they could, they could, they could start it all in January.
Yeah. That, yeah, that works. And also, I, I forgot to mention that I chose two because if one person is unable to attend a meeting for any matters, say they play a sport or they're in drama, band, whatever, uh, the other person will also, will be represented. So, I mean, it's, the primary use would, for them both would be here. But if there is a situation when one cannot attend, they're still represented.
Joe, is it, is it gonna be a, a male and a female?
Uh, I don't think gender will play a role. Uh, we originally thought about doing males and females, but then we just wanted to say, why discriminate if there's two amazing females? They would love to do it, but then both do it, there's two men.
Mrs. Moser's, that did Laurel, there's a male and a female.
Uh, as far as I know right now, Laurel, I thought that there were two females. I thought it was, uh, Abigail Fillion and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can't, I'm not exactly sure on this, but I, I could be wrong there. It could, it could be like that, one male or female.
You, you take care of it. You, you figure it out.
Do we have to take a vote on that, uh, on the honor? So, it don't need to be...
Joe, there's a question. Yes, see, if, if you're interested in getting student participation, is there value to have one representative from the junior class and one representative from the senior class? So, you would get more participation than just looking at totally the senior class?
Yeah. Um, the way I thought of this was to be one from each grade. That's a little hard. So, the way that I imagine in my brain things happening is that although they are representatives of the senior class, any grade is allowed to go to these people and say something. It's not just senior class concerns. Because, to be completely honest with you, a lot of those seniors probably won't have much concern because they're getting down anyway. So...
They're more than welcome to come to the meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that's the way I figured was that it would, these are your people who are going to be becoming adults soon. You're going into the real world. And obviously, they even have the opportunity to run for school board if they'd like to. So, I just figured to have the most mature audience, uh, hold these positions would be the best in my theory.
It's the learning process. Anytime we start something new, we learn from it, we adjust to it, and change to meet our needs. It's a good idea. We're gonna learn as we go.
And surely, this process could be amended. Say, we do do two and they don't like how it operates. And they can say, yeah, we want to do one senior and one junior. Or we want to do one representative from each grade. Or however it works. I just think this is probably the best starting point we can go from.
So, Mr. Price, I'll need to go.
I, I, I have one, one quick question, sir. The way you're suggesting to the board it be done is that if there's something that the students want the delegate to address, the delegate will come to the meeting and, and do it as part of public forum or as a separate item on the agenda?
Um, I imagine that during public forum, it might operate a little bit better if it were a separate item on the agenda. Uh, the students, uh, at Laurel Highlands actually have a seat at the, uh, school board table. So, they have a seat up there and they sit right up there along with everything else. Like I said, they don't have an official vote on anything.
Yeah, obviously, they can't have that. Do they, are you looking for them to participate in debate or to do a report in terms of what, what the student body may be requesting or just giving a stat?
Uh, a little bit of both. I, I don't want to say debate because necessarily on matters such as, like we just had installing, uh, new printers into the school, I don't think students really need an opinion on that because it's not, it doesn't directly, that's not something that's gonna directly affect them. But debate on more, I guess, matters such as the one that we just had, like, uh, in September with the homecoming parade. Yeah, more student concern than district concern.
Do you want to come to the work session also?
No, no work session because the, that behind, was the, or what's...
No, the, the work session is, it would be the executive session that they would be moving to some of the time, personnel litigation.
But the work session, I, I like the idea of, and when we're talking
to the different, um, building principals and maintenance and so forth, I mean, if there's a problem with maintenance, I, I don't know who, and of course, administration's gonna know, but your students are gonna know too. So, if, I, I, I like the idea of sitting up here. Obviously, executive session, they're not gonna be able to participate lightly here. But let them be a part of the debate. The more ideas that you have, you know, floating around and more suggestions, but it can't hurt.
I think maybe in January, we'll just play it by ear and see how it goes. It will be trial and error.
I agree with that. I think...
I seriously think you'd be better off using the work session now. Or you'd be here.
Yeah, yeah. No, I agree that they should attend both sessions. I'm sorry, I was, the way that I, I, it was my, uh, miscommunication. I was thinking executive session, no, we're not allowed an executive session. But yes, I would say work session and regular meeting.
See, you gotta work on that to get two people by January.
You got one.
You're a pioneer, you sure. I, I think at some point, you're gonna want to reduce, is, you're gonna want to reduce this to a policy. In terms of student delegates at some point. If you want to get a role and see how it works and then formalize it more concretely.
Like, like Mr. Gold says.
Uh, is there anyone else here for public forum?
Baseball?
Sure. Just state your name and your, uh, question. My name is Jamie Thorson. I am from Smithville. I'm here on behalf of the High School Baseball Boosters. We would like to ask the school board permission to take the students to the Ripken Experience from, um, March 21st to the 25th. This will be at no cost to the district. The baseball boosters completely fund the trip. Um, if you'd like to give anything to the trip, we definitely appreciate that. These kids do know that they need to be in school the day they leave. They must be in school the day, the day after they return. It's the same trip that we've taken everywhere in our school. So, we just wanted permission to go again this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, they're not going to watch, so we can have fun.
Anyone else for public forum?
I have a point of clarification. When you talk about student delegates to the board, are you looking to place a student on the board? Does that require a board policy? If you decide to put a student on the board?
Well, they, they can't be on the school board.
Well, I understand that, but to let a student involved in, in school board discussions, do you need a board policy to do that?
Well, my suggestion, well, here's what I'm gonna suggest to you, that you're approving creation, creation of two high school student delegates as a pilot program. See how it goes and then formalize it into a policy and see how it's working.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I, I, well, that's my, I don't... Am I correct you're not asking for teacher delegates to...
I would love to volunteer to sit on the board.
Have a good Christmas.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone else for public forum? Okay, moving on to secretarial. Um, enter into executive session needed. I believe we're going to do that at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, immediately following this meeting, there'll be no need to re-adjourn to the purposes of personnel and collective bargaining.
Adopt agenda as presented.
Um, what I have are three potential amendments to the agenda. They would be Article Four, G, approved entering, and I can reread this later if you wish. Approved entering into a copier contract with four business machines pursuant to his proposal dated, and it was dated November 1st, 2018. And as amended at the board workshop, the board work session of December 5th, 2018, subject to approval solicitorship form and not substance. So, they'll have to get us a contract to review what we'll have to know. The other item would be Item H, under Section Four Administrative, excuse me, Financial. That would be extend final settlement for the former A.L. Wilson Building's sale to honor before January 11th, 2019, per the request of the buyer, Eric Miller. And then the last one would be item... Mr. Price?
Yeah. If I may interrupt, I, I, I did get a, um, a call back from the buyer. And, um, there was no problems with finances. It was, one of the main reasons was to purchase the building and do the, do the closing in January. uh, do the, do the closing in January of 2019. Everybody hear that? The next item would be under Administrative. We'd be adding an Item C. And that would approve creation of two high school student delegates as a pilot program. Excuse me, approve creation of two high school student delegates to the board as a pilot program.
I have, I'm opposed to that in itself. Uh, I would like to move to, move to amend the agenda to include a motion on airing our meetings on the Bay at TV channel. Uh, as was discussed previously, there's a four more votes. We are already videotaping these meetings at no cost to the district. We could be airing them on the Bay at TV channel, and I would like to have a motion on that this evening.
My only problem with that charity is not all people have, uh, Atlanta broadband. They, most people have dish for direct TV. That's my only problem with that.
We, we may not be able to give that benefit to everybody, but there certainly are people that would, would have the benefit.
Are we putting that motion on? And again, do we vote it up or down? Um, I think it probably fits under Administrative. That would be Section Nine. It would be Item C. No, D, 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 D. Cherry, I didn't catch that. Can you state as you want it whenever we come to it?
Yes.
If we're gonna continue to do what we're doing, plus add what you're saying.
Right, and it's a no, and so according to Mr. Moses, we spoke previously, it's no cost to the district. You just have to give them the video and make an air. It's no cost to the district.
Okay, so that would be a motion to add those four items to the agenda for both.
Um, were we gonna talk about, uh, our attendance policy for the farm show? Mr. Peng, what were you suggesting we deal with that?
I was suggesting that we look, uh, to see if the students that attend the farm show, instead of the big markers, they excuse absences. It could be, it could be an approved field trip as the school board supports.
Okay.
So, can we have the agenda subject to administration approval? That, that, if, if it's okay by administration, then we can permit those that are attending or being exhibitors at the farm show to have that absentee mark of the field trip?
I think the only thing with that, I'm pretty sure our field trip policy is on days. Because the baseball people, they're going on three days. And only, that's my only question about it. Because then we're gonna have everybody go on field trips for five days.
She's so here, I thought they said, she said 21st through 25th.
There's probably, it's probably a weekend. Most of them, that's what they do. They usually, is there anyone here who takes our kids on field trips?
It's three days.
It's three days, Mr. Hudson. Three days. And usually they, they go Friday, they come back on Monday.
Yes, they usually it's weekend. That's how they get to five days.
So, once we do this, we're gonna open it up. If we do a field trip thing, that they can take five days. So, that's my only concern. Because I can't see...
Well, well, okay, let, let me suggest this to you guys. As I understand it, you're attempting to allow a student, obviously with parent permission as well, to attend the 2019, is what it's called, yeah, um, agricultural state farm, state farm show as an educational field trip day. You're not letting them go for the whole week, correct?
It's a five day.
It's the same every day.
But they, so they pick, so you're saying like students, they pick what day they want?
Unless they're actually showing a 4H or FFA project.
Which case, the school code says, yeah, and I believe the school code requires us to allow them. So, we're saying if they're presenters or exhibitors.
So, what we're gonna do is let other kids, they have up to three days where they show who that they want to go.
Yeah, I'm not saying you can limit it to one day.
We've never denied.
Well, teachers, teachers show also animals.
I'm sure.
Now, that's what we're talking about. Somebody else would want to go.
Well, but it sounds like a man should be invited to the school if the market is, is a field trip.
I just brought forward something that the school has requires.
Well, I mean, if they're showing the animals, that's mine. I just think, I think it needs to be under more review for the quality. That, that's just my opinion. But I have no problem with them going the whole day.
If you're, if you're a student or an exhibitor too, I think then we can follow that.
As long as things are reviewed, as lo- as long as, because we're, we're being reviewed, we're being reviewed, am I right? At the high school, we have to improve our attendance within four years.
Well, that's why we don't wanna treat it as an absence at all, excused or otherwise.
Issues like this push more and more people into cyber school. You know, it's, I mean, agriculture, I mean, you're not, you're not talking about just five days to go play sports. And I understand that, I might get back on to that. But there are so many educational reasons to go to the farm show. That you say, you know, if you pick and choose things like this and say, "No, you're not allowed to go," so that's more, more pressure for them to say, "Hey, screw this, I can do cyber school and go every day that I want."
No, we're all like, we're...
Just then they go, right?
We're all like, they're allowed to go five days.
I, I, we, we have always let them go. It's always, we have bought a kid, this is their career, some of them. We can't have to let them go. We always...
I think it's great.
We've never been like, yeah, there's never been a problem.
Am I correct that you're talking about exhibitors and presenters?
I, I never questioned it. If anybody comes up and says, "I wanna show an animal, I wanna go."
Okay, so they're, but they're the exhibitors and presenters. They're, they're talking about if you need a student who just wants to go see it.
Hey, go!
For five days?
No, for fi- five, it's gonna count. We sent somebody, if you wanna go to South Carolina and tell me on that chief that you wanna look at the exhibits, go!
We have five days.
We've never denied that. And we've met, yet, I've never told somebody that they've gone on a trip.
No, and you know what, what's the distinction between if you wanna be in this year, you wanna go more down?
Right, right. And on that, you're gonna say, "I'm gonna look at this, and look at the exhibits, and I'm hoping it is?" Go!
And you treat it as an excused absence or a school day?
It's excused.
Well, that's, that's the point. We're trying to not have it treated as an excused absence.
Correct, but you're not in school.
But if it's a field trip, you are in school.
Correct.
That's what we want. So, we're not violating the tabs. We'll be filming.
Okay, how does this sound? If you would, you would add an item... You would add an item to Administrative? That would be E, E, Direct Administration to authorize students to attend the 2019 Pennsylvania Farm Show for one school day as a field trip with parental permission.
But if they already go, you, Mr. Hudson?
No, no, they're talking about the exhibitors.
No, he said anybody. He's never told anybody.
But they're treating it as an absence.
So, so, so let me play the other side. If I get a thousand excuses on this day up, and we all went to the farm show, it's excused. That's, it's a field trip. I'm, I'm ju- I'm just saying, yeah, we're in because we're, we're making it and I'm okay with it. Is that what we're going with? Or where we are now and you submit, go! I, I think it's great. I think it's great.
We all do.
Not, not just for the farm show, but we have, um...
That's my, that's my point. That if we're gonna do this, we better look down the road and what else?
That's why I think we need to take time and do more. That's just my opinion.
I didn't know it was, I didn't know it was a issue of, right?
To clarify, to clarify the, uh, the way students can be excused for family travel, it's based on your number of absences if you have. If you have a student that has more than ten absences and their family's taking your trip to Disney World, they do not get approved. Those absences would be unexcused because they've already missed ten days of school in a, in a year prior to that trip.
Correct.
If a student has less than ten days, they would be given approval and they would be excused absences. That's how our family lead, um, operates now.
Correct. And the last thing, the most that I can't remember, that if I have over my ten days, they still go for it.
They go, they're marked unexcused. If they're over ten days.
Correct, correct. No one has ever came back and said, "You know what? We're not gonna go on that trip because my son or daughter has missed 11 days." That hasn't happened yet.
Never going to.
I, hey.
I was saying, as a visitor, if we're being evaluated for absences, if we...
If the families, if the family approvals, um, that's a challenge on this.
Can I just say, I wish you would've brought it over there. I mean, I, I may be publicly putting it up. And I, for one, do not, I, I'm not capable of putting anything on the agenda tonight. I have no problem with the farm show. I think it's great. I think it's wonderful. I think we need to decide right now if there's enough to put it on. If not, we need to just move on.
Well, these kids wanna take something and exhibit. They can use, if they're under their ten days, they can use their family.
Mr. Price, it's a school cut.
If, if their exhibitors were required to let them go. I think your issue is whether you count it as a attendance day or an absence. Excused absence versus in attendance. That's what you're trying to accomplish.
In fact, I think that we should permit Mr. Page to check into that and if he gets a good approval. But I think that we, I think we should try it right now. Cause I'm, I'm comfortable permitting it.
Well, I think if you got kids that are in this ten days of school, they don't need to do it. They don't deserve to go to the farm show. They take themselves in that situation, it's hard over that mountain.
So, so what about the community scenario for a long time?
We're gonna get a medical excuse.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm not capable of putting on the agenda. Is anyone else?
I'm not capable. I'm not, it's probably a bit.
Okay, Carl, please?
I'm not.
Okay, I, I'm not.
Well, I'm, I'm obviously not able to...
Okay, well, they're really not in our...
I think we were caught up with an issue of, you know, not just beside the farm show. We want, if, if students miss, to go to this educational experience. It'll be a field trip day as an attendance day for our district, and we won't be penalized.
I understand that, but I feel we're opening up, we're opening up a whole can of worms. I just really want Mr. Page. I think it should be handled as it has been in the past for this January. And I feel in January, Mr. Page can bring us what he, what information he has to have, and then we can do stuff, and then we can do a lot. That's my, that's how I feel.
Your ears can help.
That's how I feel about it.
Okay, so you want a motion to amend the agenda to add Article, Section Four, G, regarding a copier contract, H, regarding extending the settlement agreement. And you wanna add to Section Nine, um, student delegate and the broadcasting board meetings.
Yes.
Item D.
Will you give those, Mr. Price? Will you give me those?
Yes, and, uh, Ms. Prufa's gonna do Item D.
Yes. Um, okay, moving on to secretarial. Through the approvals of the following meeting of November 14th, 2018 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. So, financials. Grant permission to pay the following bills and payroll for December 2018. Bill... Bill of utilities, insurance, and contractual obligations paid at the end of the previous month in an amount of two days, $583,201.12.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Current month general fund bill in an amount of $307,144.28. Motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Utilities, capital reserve, and other bills due upon review by superintendent and or controller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Except activity accounts report as presented by building principals.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approve Act One mailing not to exceed $4,000.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Appoint Ryan Bruski to Southwest Regional Task Bureau 20th, 2019, representative for a one-year term, and finish at all, all times.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Authorize the appropriate officers of the school district to execute and deliver special warranty deeds to the buyers of the former A.L. Wilson properties and any other documents necessary for closing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approve invoice in an amount of $21,957.50 for new security cameras for AG North and AG South Middle Schools to all campus security capital project lines.
So moved.
Pending, excuse me, we've discussed about pending.
Yes, and you would add to that, subject to being successfully tested for proper operation.
Did I have a mention?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, Lee, would you please take her, Gina Page?
Yes.
G is your call.
G, G, approve entering into a copier contract with Ford business machines pursuant to its proposal dated November first, 2018, and as amended at the board workshop, this board works section of December fifth, 2018, subject to approval solicitor as the form and not substance.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Um, next motion, H, would be extend final settlement for the former A.L. Wilson buildings sale to honor before January 11th, 2019, per the request of the buyer, Eric Miller.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Correspondence.
Now, I had touched already on the thank you for the individuals that assisted with the bus acts with A.L. Wilson. Once again, thanks to all that jumped in during that crisis situation. I'm thanking to the parents and the students, um, that were on that bus for their cooperation, understanding, the wrath we were dealing.
So, is there a report?
Um, no report, Madam President, except to thank you for appointing our firm and wish everybody a very good night.
Uh, curriculum and instruction.
Excuse me. I would like to reiterate what Mr. Hudson had touched on earlier this evening in the work session. Is that the district received $25,000 in BP CD grant toward the purchase of bag scanners for both middle schools and then additional scanner for the high school. Insurance coming from the student parking lot. That money should be released to us in January so we can move forward with, with those purchases. Um, also, as part of the Act Forty-four, the district is, uh, we will be attending a training tomorrow with our team on the Safe to Say Something program that the state will be rolling out in January. Um, the Safe to Say Something anonymous reporting system allows individuals to submit secure and anonymous safety concerns to help identify and intervene when unsafe or harmful behaviors, uh, may take place. The tips can be submitted via an app, online, or a dedicated hotline. Each tip will be reviewed by a call center housed by the Office of the Attorney General. The call center will process... The call center will process and refer each tip to the appropriate school teams and law enforcement according to the level of threat or concern. So that is the Safe to Say Something that will be rolling out in January. Whether that will be delayed or not, we don't know. We will learn more information tomorrow as we're going to attend that training tomorrow morning. Okay. And I would like to thank you all for being here. And once again, Merry Christmas to all of you. Happy holidays. And that's it for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Personnel. Grant Rachel Wolf an intermittent FMLA leave upon completion of all her sick and personal leave. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carries? Grant Julie Bell an intermittent FMLA leave upon completion of all her... Accurate... Accurate or sick and personal leave.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carries? Grant Paul Thomas maintenance worker relieved of absence commencing December 10, 2018 for approximately six weeks. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carries? Except the resignation of Kristi Pfizer classroom teacher effective November 28, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carries?
Just a point that the reason this happened, and this is to the teachers, she did not meet the criteria necessary to give her a certification, right?
No.
No?
No, it wasn't. As I understand it, it's personal reasons.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought it was something else.
Moving on. Grant Elizabeth Newlak a parental leave of absence from January 22, 2019 to March 18, 2019. All accused sick and personal shall be used during this period. A motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carries? Grant permission to eliminate a midnight custodian position at AG High School.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carries? Grant permission to hire the following coaches for one season during 2018-2019 school year pending all proper documents or receipt. May I do this with blanket approval?
Will there be any extensions?
Uh, yes.
Yes. Okay. Then I would do roll call.
Yes. Joe Morton, assistant varsity baseball.
So you can do the roll call once, but they need to state which one they're standing on.
Okay.
So you can do a roll call. You can combine them, but they need to state which item they're standing on.
Okay. So we do this, and then anyone who needs to stand can do so at the time.
Right.
Joe Morton, assistant varsity baseball. Eric Forsythe, assistant varsity baseball. Bailey Powell, head middle school volleyball. Kristen Dunn, assistant middle school volleyball. Rachel Dunn, volunteer assistant middle school volleyball. Drew Dindel, high school winter conditioning coach. All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to do roll call? I'm standing.
Roll call first?
Yes. Do roll call with me.
No, it's Mr. Dunn. Oh, it's Mr. Paul. Sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Paul, yes. Mr. Mike Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Bruski?
Yes.
Ms. Moser?
Yeah.
Ms. Franks?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
No, all my good respect to Kristen Dunn, and I will say that it pains me to vote no because I am sure that she's a wonderful coach, but to be consistent, and the approach that I've taken is that we need to have an anti-nepotism policy for paid positions. I'm voting no. With respect to number five, because of the volunteer position, I am voting yes with the other many numbers.
Mr. Paul Dunlop?
Yes, all except for on the standing from four to five. And there's a correction on five. It's Rachel Dunn. Her very name is Rachel Alterson.
Ms. Swain?
Yes. Transfer Jason Smithley, part one attendance, to 12-month security position at a rate of $11 per hour effective December 3, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carries? Grant permission to eliminate the following cafeteria positions. May I do this blanket?
Yes.
3.5-hour position in high school, 3-hour position at Masontown Elementary, 6.5-hour position at Masontown, 6.7-hour position at North Middle School, 5.5-hour position